Alright, and we'll open the meeting in six thirty. Thank you for inviting us to the J.T. Hood School. And for... The first thing on the agenda is a public event. Does anyone want to offer anything? Okay. We're gonna go with the student report and then the presentation. Julie, I'm sorry. It's Julie. Julia Thorstad, class of three. You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm Julia. And for academic matters, sophomores and juniors who took the practice SATs can see their scores on December 11th. This past Saturday, some students started their first round of SAT testing. Many seniors are finishing submitting college applications and some have heard back from their early decision or early action choices. For the arts, masters debuted Shrek the Musical and their opening weekend was a massive success. This week's performance is sold out as well. Winter sports have been on practice. They will soon have their seasonal games. Winter track especially has a meet on Saturday. Many clubs are running events. Interact will be Christmas caroling to senior citizens at Blueberry Court on December 19th. ECO Team is encouraging students to pledge to reduce their use of plastic and recycle whenever possible. Students involved will sign their name on a model cap that will be used to make a large art project. Students can donate unwrapped toys for a Take a Tag event where they donate the gift in exchange for a tag on the bulletin board. Additionally, the Parents Association will welcome alumni to speak to students on December 5th. And for my student work, I brought this assignment from my AP running to science class. And this is the report. This period's goal is to simulate a steam dating where each student created a profile about a certain biome in the world to talk about to the person. Yeah, mine's a coral reef. And so things we talked about were pH, salinity, species that inhabit that biome and how humans can hack the region. And it was a unique project because, you know, we got to use pick-up lines about our biome. And it was a fun way to talk to the students.
I was just gonna say, I went to Shrek. It was fantastic. My kids loved it. And I don't know if you guys, it's pretty much sold out now, but if you could go, you should definitely go. My kids are singing all the songs now. My boys are walking around like Florida, like Farquad. I've been to the whole time, so.
Anyone else? Well, thank you. You did very good job for your first time. Alright. Mr. McKay?
Thank you. Welcome to the A. U. L. school committee united at Hood School. Thanks for joining us again this year. I love this little tradition. I was happier to move up towards away from the state mandated testing and get here closer to December break. So that's great. It was a wonderful time to have you here. Again, we're usually delighted to share some of the amazing things that we're doing here at Hood School. Some nice new initiatives. We're gonna talk about work that's going on in grade three in the state of Massachusetts and that curriculum. We'll talk about our student council and what they're up to. Mrs. Clary's gonna speak regarding steam night, which was a huge success here at Hood School. I'm sure you've heard that we do not win the turkey trot again. It was very disappointing for me, but we did have some amazing runners and they did really well. And they're gonna come and share their experience and their experience that they had as part of our running club. And then we're going to talk about stand-up desks. It's a new initiative that we have here. And then we're gonna close it out with the Hood School chorus singing a winter compilation. So I hope, look forward to a great night. And we're gonna start off with our third grade group here. Mr. Larson's class. Thank you. Mr. Larson.
Boys and girls, please stand. And I'm gonna bring you guys up a little bit. We need to do a little post operatives work here. Will you come out this way and bring us into the semi-circle up again with the pen down a little bit? There, you're perfect right now. Good, pull down, wait for the screen. Michael, you're good, right there. And you guys are gonna come over this way. Kelsey, come over here. Good job. Right over here, hurry, follow Kelsey. Shoulder to shoulder. A little bit more, Kelsey. I'm gonna find you, find you. Are you guys ready? Are you guys ready?
Yes!
Well, say it like you mean it!
Yes, like I mean it!
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing after the pledge of allegiance. For a brief tribute to our president, the captain will concede. Please rise with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. Honored guests.
Can we just stop for a second for a moment this time? It's late, okay? Thank you. Very good. Sorry to interrupt you, my friend.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. Honored guests. My name is Michael Sarn. I'm a third grade student here at the Hood School. Please join our class by honor America by reciting the Poet of Belief.
Which we did already.
Hello, my name is Kelsey Berry. We are students from Mr. Larson's third grade classroom. In our lesson, we have been learning about Massachusetts, our home, as part of our studies in the history, geography, and people of our state.
Hi, my name is Adriana Driscoll. And... Hi, I'm Adriana Driscoll. And we'd like you to know that we have learned about the regions north, south, east, and west in our state, such as Cape Cod and the islands of Nantucket and Marcus Vineyard, and the northern, the northern south shores, the Pioneer, the Connecticut River Valley, the Berkshire Hills and the pine pines.
We've discovered that in our state, we are part of a diverse population that harvests and protects our natural resources, that we produce goods and provide services in many different ways. And we've gone through many changes over time. That our home is part of a larger region called the New England States.
Mr. Larson has introduced us to a song about America that he first learned as a fourth grade student while learning about American history.
A long time ago in a school far, far away.
Through the inspiration of American folk legend Woody Guthrie, my class and I have worked together and rewritten his famous song, first written about America years ago. Here then is our version of this land is your land with words that reflect our learning about our Commonwealth set to the music of Mr. Woody Guthrie.
My name is Bryce Biggs. In my class and I are proud of our history and look forward to learning more about Massachusetts, our home. We hope you enjoy our song.
This state is your state. This state is my state. From the aquatic mountains to the ancient islands and the pioneer valley to the Quappen reservoir. This state was made for you and me. As I was traveling along the highway, I saw green forests all around me. I saw below me river valleys. This state was made for you and me. I've studied and learned and crafted our history from the pilgrim landing to the red Sox winning. And all around me patriots are singing. This state was made for you and me. We fought and struggled in Boston Harbor with Deborah Samson in the revolution with Paul Revere at Concord and Lexington. This state was made for you and me. This state is your state. This state is my state. From aquatic mountains to the ancient islands and the pioneer valley to the Quappen reservoir. This state was made for you and me. This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York Islands and the redwood forest to the tall stream waters. This land was made for you and me. This state was made for you and me.
Excellent job, kids. I've actually enjoyed the past like week. Walking by the classroom, it's a while. I've been hearing that song and just watching you enjoy it. So now that you've learned a lot about the state of Massachusetts, I loved that book. Thank you for coming on. So I much appreciate your job. Well done.
Thank you.
A little technical difficulty there, working. Sorry about that. So well done by our grade three class, Mr. Larson's classroom. Next up, we have our Hood School student council to update you on what they're, what they have and what they've been up to for the beginning of the school year, so. So our Hood School council is basically overseen by Mrs. Clary. And this, I used to call her Miss Chee-er. It's Mrs. Sherman now. It's been ten years, so it's tough for me to pass that. So Mrs. Clary's here inside representing. We have the student council to fill your role.
Hello, I'm Katie Thurman. As part of the student council, we have daily responsibilities. Each week, one person is responsible for doing the announcements. For this student council members, tell who birthday it is, give a fact or quote the day, and exploit upcoming fundraisers and spirit days. Another one of our responsibilities is to raise and lower the flag each morning and afternoon. We do this with a partner from the student council so that we can make sure the flag is put up correctly each morning and folded correctly at the end of the day.
Hello, I am Breida. Throughout the year, we've organized fundraisers. Tonight, we will tell you about two of our most popular. Every September, we collect food for the North Running Food Hantry. This year, we've collected over 100. Every day for our week, we would help collect and organize food that the school does receive. At the end of the fundraiser, we have a third party to get to pick up. It's nice knowing that all of our friends and neighbors are here.
Set up.
Hello, I'm Noah Klein. You may have noticed the two big toys for talks boxes in the lobby when you entered our school tonight. This is the fourth year where we have joined forces to put the North Running Fire Department to collect new unwrapped toys for kids who might need an extra toy during this holiday season. We will collect, we will be collecting toys until next Monday. Today, we kicked off the event by investing holiday outfits. Next week, the North Running Fire Department will come, will come by with another one of their fire trucks to bring up their toys and they will deliver them to those in need.
I joined the student council because I'm excited about being a leader of the school. Student council members are expected to be a role model for other students, including the fifth graders. It is our goal to follow the rules of the school, safe, responsible, and respectful, and to help our peers follow them as well. It is fun to be a member of student council because we get to decide what our upcoming spirit days and fundraisers will be. These fundraisers are a great way for us to give back to the community. As a member of student council, I have learned more about being a leader and more about helping the people around.
Student Kay? Yes. Can we have the second member read again since we didn't have a chance here because of the mic?
Hi, I am Breida. Throughout the year, we organized different fundraisers. Tonight, we will tell you about two of our most popular events. Every September, we collect food for the North Running Food Hantry. This year, we will collect, we collected over 20 boxes. Every day for a week, we would help collect and organize the food at Hood School generously donated. At the end of the fundraiser, the North Running Food Hantry came to pick it all up. It's nice knowing that all our friends and neighbors North Running have a place to go and get food if they need to.
Absolutely, we're quite proud of this group. And it's definitely that next level of dedication, a lot of extra work on their, on their part, and a lot of extra work for leaders. But it's all good, good stuff and we appreciate it. It's a nice beginning leadership role. Just a lot of things. Any questions for you members of the student council?
Did you have a goal on how much you wanted to collect out of the food pantry and do you wish that?
No, we did not.
So our latest fundraiser is Toys for Talks. Started today, we...
Go to next Monday.
It goes until next Monday. Today was... We're supposed to wear?
Test of sweater.
Test of sweaters, yes. I'm the mom. So I had to do a little better job of following up with that. But everybody was dressed in their best sweaters today and dropping off Toys for Talks. So they do great, awesome, great things for us and make us really look good. So we appreciate everything you do. Thanks. So everyone in the committee knows and everybody in the audience that we spent a lot of time talking about our paper space, our science curriculum, and those hands-on activities that we have for our learners. So last year, we engaged in a hands-on activity and we felt that very valuable. We saw a lot in that for the parents and a lot in that for the video. So this year, we, I'm not taking any credit. Mrs. Clary, you can go over the summer and wanted to do a steam night for parents. So I'm gonna let her speak a little bit about that and just a little bit about Mrs. Clary. She's just had, she's always been an amazing professional in my building, but the past two, three years have been shining star. Yeah, so we're quite proud of her. We're more than teacher of the year, so that was quite an accomplishment. And, and you know, we talk a lot about our science scores here at the Hood School and the amount of students that we had advanced and proficient. And she certainly, I'll just try to use a baseball analogy with that, that she was just at the end of the line and she, she hit the home run with that for the kids. And it was the perfect timing of teaching and learning. And it was just a wonderful thing to see. And I mean, it was her hard work that paid off at the end. So we much appreciate it. Mrs. Clary?
Alright. So as Mr. McKay said, we kinda started talking last year about we should have a steam night to get parents and students involved all together in one event. And so over the summer, we settled on a date for November 8th, which at the time, I had no idea that there was even a steam week. So when I found out I was a week later, I was like, oh, poor timing on my part. But it was already planned and in the schedule, so it was okay. We sent out an email early in October to ask for volunteers. And fortunately, 14 teachers stepped up and helped out planning and organizing the event, helping gather supplies and putting everything together. And then in mid-October, I went to the P.A. and they sent out a save the date for all the parents. And late October, we did a presentation with the P.A. and they offered us $250 to help us buy all the little supplies that we needed to get all these activities done. So we used activities that we found online and we were able to set up 14 different stations, including hands-on activities, new ideas involving technology that the students were using in digital learning, and a lot of fun, different hands-on experiences. So some of the examples were globs in a bottle, which worked with the ideas of different densities of fluids and chemical reactions to cause that kind of lava lamp effect. Another one was the moon-based landing. It involved teamwork and collaboration with a group of people, up to eight people. And they had to figure out force and balance to land a device without the ball falling off the top. You can actually see that in the top left-hand corner. Or from your, sorry, your top right. And then we did another one with stop-motion video, working with the iPads to create short stop-motion videos using the new apps. In the end, we had about 80 students in attendance from 40 different families. And at the door, the parents were given a passport. And I have examples of the passport here. That the parents, as they went to each station, they get a stamp in their passport saying they completed it. And then they use those stamps to get popcorn at the end that was donated by the P.A. And all of the families worked together to complete the task. So it wasn't just the students working independently. The parents and the students worked together as a team to solve all these steam problems that they came across. So we actually have... Okay. Two of the stop-motion videos that were created. So they're short stop-motion videos, but they're cute little videos about how the students kinda use this time. So that one, you can see the player shooting the basketball. And then this one, the student ends up spelling out her name with beads over the course of the video. Those are pretty untouchable. But it gives a good opportunity for the students to kind of dabble in different technologies and see the way that the learning they do in school kind of can be something that they can take and use later on. So can we give them packets?
Yes.
Alright, so you have some packets with all the different activities that were offered along with some of the things that were offered at each station. And then I'll just give you the passports that were given out as well.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Clary. 14 states, so 14 volunteers along with us there. And I think that you'll also see the here at Hood that we're quite proud of. We talk about our motto all the time. In the end, together we can. I think it's important to note that the little things that the Parents Association does for us, such as sponsoring the night.
Bringing popcorn.
Bringing a lot of popcorn, which I enjoyed over multiple days. So those little things mean a lot to us. So that was much appreciated. So thank you to the Parents Association for doing that. And you'll see that comes up with late in the next presentation as well. Any questions for Mrs. Clary on the steam night? Or student council?
Will this become the annual event?
Uh, that is the goal.
Yeah, we're hopeful. It was a huge success. First night out, 80 plus people.
Yes.
Yeah, it was a busy night. It was a great night, so we're hopeful.
I have a question. It's actually probably more for Mr. Howard. But if you had that high school steam night, is there a chance of incorporating other schools into that? Would you think, or would that come back to you?
Well, the steam night, the district held all five schools. All right, because it was elementary, middle school. Ours was more geared toward the governor's declaration of recognizing same activities in the state of this state. Ours was kind of more of a purple down from the state level. But where Mrs. Clary was here was very much more kind of grassroots, older for the school. Back to Haley, I did come and we showed our science knowledge a little bit. Tried it anyway. It was very well done. But I think having the kindergarten through grade 12 representation of the district by one is something we certainly strive for. But I think if the school wants to do something on its own, we certainly support that.
And for us, when the training was going on at the same time, so it was, we'd already started ours moving and now it was moving. So some coordination next year might yield a different... So. Any other questions? Well, forget it. Thanks, Mrs. Clary.
Thank you.
Three of my, I don't know how to describe these three, but super fast. Did you run three miles and accomplish that? Yeah, so I have a picture. It's up on the screen of them celebrating. They're a bunch of them competing three miles. I didn't dare go up with them. I used to be able to. But they took over. They took the running club to the next level. They gave it a great effort. So I invited them today to speak a little bit about the running club and Focus Fitness, two parent-driven initiatives that we have here that are yielding some great results to our kids. So this is Drew, Pierce, and Trevor.
Good evening. We are Drew Nichols, Trevor Baggannon, and Pierce Pratt. We are here to communicate and talk about new amazing activities in the Hood School, focus fitness, and hound dog coaches. The purpose of this group is that we meet during the fall. The goal of this group is to provide a great wake-up to a group of students in grades kindergarten to grade 10. This group, this group of students arrive neatly and participate in some amazing lessons and activities. The strong jumps, they're a play for everyone's favorites. The students were also educated on healthy eating habits and healthy lifestyles.
The Hound Dog Hustlers also meet weekly during the fall. You may have seen us running around the streets behind your school. The goal of the Hound Dog Hustlers program is to provide an opportunity for us students to learn about and participate in a running club while developing a passion for this activity.
The volunteers for this group will be recognized later in this school year. But we want to send out a thank you to the following Focus Fitness volunteers. Anne Lynn, Julia Hinch, Caitlin Stevens, Jessica Blanchett, and Christian Dany.
Hound Dog Hustler volunteers, Jason Catalano, Danielle Catalano, Elka Zimmerman, Jessica Blanchett, and Bob Cockley.
One parent testimonial exemplifies our goal. Running club is a great program that our son has thoroughly enjoyed. He has discovered that he loves turn, that he's even encouraged his dad to get out and run with him a few times. His brother is Chris Ralston. Thanks so much for being an inspiration and encouragement.
As the Hood School motto goes on, hand in hand, together we can. The activities would not be possible without a strong group of parents working collaboratively with their school.
You know, if I didn't hold him back, he might have came in first, right? Pierce, right? If I'd have pulled you back during all the training.
Okay, I heard a rumor that he sat for breakfast during the run.
Yeah, he does. He takes some stocks along the way. Those water stocks along the way. It was especially cold this year as you know. So it's great that he was out there and doing that for us and representing our school. Much appreciated. We've had some amazing kids and some amazing parents doing some great stuff. It's that, that life lesson around healthy lifestyles, eating, running, exercising, and all those that go on. Starting with our kindergarten friends all the way up to fifth grade. So it's pretty great. We're pretty proud of it, so. Any questions, or not?
When did they meet? Is it before or after school?
Before school. If you remember a long time ago, we had the Reebok Grant or the Box Grant. And basically, the idea behind the Box Grant is that you get up in the morning and it gives you, you know, like a brain boost in the morning and gets you ready for the day. I always try to wrap my mind around how to statistically quantify that. But this group of kids, I go into this every year with this idea of like I'm gonna collect data. But I know that the data will be skewed based on the kids. So it's, I kinda get lost in it. But this is just the character. I mean, the teacher reports and the focused, the level of focus on most kids is obviously increased because of the exercise in the morning. But I can't make a direct correlation with that as much as I want to. But it's definitely, it's interesting stuff.
How many students are participating in the running club? And how much are they running? And how much are they running?
So it's around... Well, so both groups had around 30 kids. The running group had 34, I think, at most. And there was, these three guys ran three and a quarter mile most weeks. Most of the other groups did at least two miles. You know, we had the different volunteers break up into different groups. And sometimes we had to pass kids off. You know, this kid is taken off. And so we just let him catch up. But you know, there's all Cheyenne Circle and all the different little side streets. So this group would take a right and go down the circle. The other group would go straight across. It was hard to kind of get the exact mileage on all of them. That was impressive, yeah.
And there was a lot of volunteers for that, too. So it was much appreciated. Because as you can imagine, probably in the streets behind the hood school, there's a lot of different variables of people and having each kid cover along that route. So it's definitely not just us as a school. It was that opportunity of working with the parents to make sure that everybody's comfortable along the way.
Just fall and spring, or something you wanted to do?
So we've always done it in the fall. It gets a little bit harder, crazier in the spring with everyone's busy schedule. So we try. We got a couple runs in last spring. But primarily, it's a lead-up to the Turkey Trot, is what we pitch it as. I need to train.
Next year, you'll get sluff shoulders.
That's right, that's right. I really wish these people who were racing me would tell me that they're racing me.
I know, we kept it a secret. I really wasn't fair.
No, no clue.
Not fair enough.
If drops that bomb, they beat me by eight seconds.
So I'll also say that when you're participating in the Turkey Trot, you base on the assumption that it's a race, so...
It's a community gathering.
No, it's a race. And Mr. Quinlan never likes to hear this, but the last time I raced Mr. Quinlan in the Turkey Trot, I did...
Another example of someone who didn't tell me. He has not run since that day.
Eight years ago.
Mr. Quinlan is embracing the true spirit of the event.
That's right.
Right?
Except they left me in the dust.
It's all good fun, and that's part of it. So it was a good time, a good time at my house, so... Any other questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Quinlan. Thank you, boys. Well done. So I'm going to introduce Mrs. LaCarver. Mrs. LaCarver is our occupational therapist. As many of you have been walking around the middle school, you see the main office of the middle school. Their staff members are standing up at stand-up desks. I have many children throughout the building on different types of seating arrangements. Some bouncy balls, some yoga balls. See seats with some rubberized straps on them for anxiety or just for movement breaks and those kind of things. So I became very interested in this initiative that Mrs. LaCarver brought to us. I'm gonna let her talk a little bit about stand-up desks. Welcome.
So I wanted to bring the stand-up desks here based on initiative that I did at my last position. I was there for 13, 14 years. And you know, I'd heard about the desks. I had seen some research on the desks. One man in particular, Mark Bendon, he's out of the Texas A&M. And he's done some research on the standing desks. And it's a little... You know, there's been plenty of articles. And there has been some inconsistent results, actually, with the articles. But he has found some success with fewer disruptive behaviors, more active engagement, and also an increase in energy expenditure. When kids are allowed to stand up and move around. Not to say that we want to be standing at the standing desk all day long. You don't really want to be sitting all day. You don't really want to be standing all day. It's kind of that option to move around and be in different positions. Again, the data, there needs to be more studies done, you know, to support it. But basically, the biggest data that I found was just a success when I brought them into my old position. The teachers and students loved them. You know, everybody. It was just such positive feedback, so I wanted to bring them here. So I wrote a grant for the PA. And they have been so, so generous in supporting this. And I piloted 10 desks at the end of last year. I kind of just fielded teachers on who wanted to try one in their desk. And I got 10 teachers back who wanted to. So they've been in their classrooms now. And so here's what I kind of did a check-in earlier this year. And here's what the teachers are saying. Stephanie Chakrella said, "My students love the standing desk." Can everyone see it? Okay, I'll have to read it. And then Kelly Costa in third grade, "We have one, we love it." And we have four more. And Marie Wright and Michelle have one. I have more. I just picked kind of four of them to represent different grades. They're in grades one through grade five. Not every classroom has one yet. And Marie Wright uses them all the time. She uses them every day. She has on her... You know, when the kids rotate their jobs and what to do, there's a standing desk list, too. Because the kids, they just all want to try them. So they get every week, so everyone gets the standing desk. And same thing with fifth grade. They just love them. So I thought I'd get some sound bites from some of the kids from their perspective. This is the first grader.
If you miss one, because it has a swinging thing at the bottom. And if there wasn't a swing thing at the bottom, I'd be probably in my next class.
We'll play that one again with this closer to it. Oh. Nope, people lost.
Basically, he said he likes the standing desk because of the swinging bar. And if he wasn't swinging on the swinging bar, he'd probably be playing with something else. And these are just what these kids said.
Um, a bar. Put a bar.
Again, she said her legs get stiff from sitting so long. And research does say that kids sit in school. It's like the longest that they sit throughout the day. And it can be a really long time. Kind of liked her perspective. She said, "When she's sitting, it makes the days longer. And when she's standing, it makes the day shorter." I liked her sort of kind of cute perspective that when she was standing, you know, I interpreted it a little that when she's standing, she's just a little more actively engaged. And it just feels like the day's longer than when she's sitting, and it's just a little more dragging out. Some of that was her perspective. These are just some random pictures, totally not posed. I kind of walked her off by camera and peeked in our classrooms and just snapped some pictures of all the classrooms using them. So they've been received with some great feedback. The kids love them, the staff loves them. The PA has been so supportive. And they're continuing to be supportive. We're gonna get some more. So all the classes could have them, and some teachers want to. Some teachers find them helpful more for, you know, wired-to-kids who have a harder time with attention and movement. But all the kids really want them. So having two in the lab, just more kids to be able to have access to them. So thank you, PA. Any questions?
So the research you were talking about, does that apply specifically to academia? Or was that just senior guests in general?
So Mark Bendon is more academia. And a lot of the research is done with elementary. His is more with college level. But there has been some research with elementary. The college level has been a little bit more conclusive that he's been finding. The elementary level hasn't been as conclusive. It's been, you know, some, one study will find it, and another study will find it helpful. And another study will just kind of find it not harmful, but not yielding like significant results that it's that helpful. I think it can be a hard thing to measure. And again, the studies aren't super rigorous that they're doing for them. So there needs to be more, a little more rigorous as far as research studies go. They're a little loose in how they're defining things and how they're measuring things. But like I said, just hearing it anecdotally.
I think it's a fairly...
Powerful research.
It's fairly new in the academic world.
It is.
And I think the ideal would be when we have a $1,000 spend to have desks that could be either sitting or standing.
Yes.
So then the student can make their own decision at that time, right?
Yeah, but a lot of the research has been doing in the workplace. You know, it's a lot, you know, make sure you're in good ergonomics. And again, you don't want to stand up all day. It's just giving that option to stand up and to down and be mobile and move your body around and chase positions. But they've had research in the workplace, too.
Is the height easily adjusted?
It is adjustable. You just, it's pretty easy. You need an Allen wrench. So there's like four screws on the bottom, and you just Allen wrench them and lift them up. So it's not really something a student could do on the ones that we have. I'm sure there's easier ones that are way more expensive that, you know, maybe have like a lever that you can go up and down. And that's not what, you know, I got here. That was kind of out of the budget. So that is, you know, something that's a little difficult to... Because you do want, you know, your elbow's at at least a 90-degree when you're standing. So there's a lot of variant height in the building. So that is one thing. But maybe two would help, with one shorter one, one longer one. Any questions?
Do you think, this might not be a question for you guys necessarily, but not that we came out with a thought on it. Do you think this is something that's... Especially the swinging bar. Just wondering about like kids with, you know, students that have attention issues, this could even start being incorporated in IEPs? Something like that, where if you see an improvement in this, do you think that's something that could happen in the future?
So when you see a lot of this language around flexible seating, right? So for example, the yoga ball to sit in and those kind of things, where they have the opportunities for movement. So with an IEP or something like that, you would see something around like the language of movement breaks. And so when a child takes a movement break, sometimes they take that movement break and they take a walk or something like that. To access to that moving bar gives them that aesthetic movement and hopefully achieves that goal and keeps them in that safe physical space because they're getting their needs met. I love that they self-select it, too. So you can see those kids, so much of what we do is an IEP or a 504 or something like that. This is definitely designed to meet diverse needs in that sense. But it's also designed to be like a universal accommodation for all kids that can just access it whether they, you know, identified or not. I mean, I just remember myself as a student. I was always tapping my feet or something like that, so...
And even adults, if you look around and see who's visiting with their pet, and you know, it's always, we all do stuff.
My former freshman English teacher was shaking his head yes because he remembers me. It was my freshman English teacher. So, so excellent. More questions on this topic, thank you.
That was great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And this is something that we've been working in the Parents Association on, and it's one of those goals we've achieved. So much appreciated all the work that they do. We wouldn't be doing anything that we're doing if we didn't have this one, so... With that being said, this brings us to a close. Before we go, though, we have a winter concert selection for our hood school chorus. It's just gonna take me a minute to rearrange this, cut that off. And I'm going to hope that I get this closer with first try. All right, so this is Miss Camo in our hood school chorus.
This is a little preview of our upcoming winter concert. It is the kids' chosen favorite song. The title is "The First Day of the Winter." Late dawn and early sunset, and it's pretty cold outside. It's fall, the winter solstice, and the sun hangs low in the sky. It's the shortest day of the year in the northern hemisphere. On December 21st, we're there all now. But it's the first day. It's the first day, the very first day. It's the first day. The first day of winter. The first day of winter. Snowballs, the changing seasons, wind is whistling through the trees. Birds tilt on its axis at 23.5 degrees. It's the shortest day of the year in the northern hemisphere. On December 21st, we're there all now. But it's the first day. It's the first day, the very first day. It's the first day. The first day of winter. The first day of winter. The first day of winter. Welcome to the afternoon on Thursday at 9:30 for our school and at 7:00 PM for the families and the community. So we look forward to seeing you there.
So that being said, that brings us to a case on our end. Any questions? We want to answer them, but thank you for coming. I love this tradition. For like 10 years now. It's been like 15 years. Can mix up a little bit to see what you think, so... It's not something that you measure.
I'm gonna talk to you all the next time.
Kind of like, why have fun? Know the kids. You know, hang out with them. I think you're like, as you can see, yeah. Yeah, so you know, we're always trying to look for like that individual speed. Trying to like, how do you... And you get a kid by just making a little move, right? That's where she came from.
I mean, I personally think, and this is a part of the schools, I like the difference between these things. And I think, if you're taking from your community, I feel like you guys, you're very good here. I think a lot of things start here that in a kid or a student or a district. Right? And I think you're really good at supporting community teachers and have ideas over there. I think I described you as being a very...
Much appreciated. Inside, so when you saw the agenda, it says the study groups, right? So I didn't really talk much about that. But internally, the structure that we have is... I think the one fact that meetings can be served by and solved by anyone, right? There's a lot of things this year, those meetings that aren't necessarily... They need to listen to. So I put them in study groups for like professional learning meetings. They designate a topic. And that topic is kind of generally interesting because it's... They need your community. It eliminates teacher isolation, and it gives so many benefits. So when they get together, they come up with these kind of things. So study groups, the Maker Space STEAM night. A group today was working on all sorts of different assessment techniques using like Google Classroom. One teacher was working on... They're all sharing ideas like from each other, going into each other. So that's kind of what those are designed for. And that's why I made this space that they teach generally. They ask how much should we support actively their ideas. It's a nice way to look at teacher learning and expert teachers to kind of... Everybody's got a little bag of tricks, right? And some teachers' bag of tricks. You can take that bag of tricks and take things from it and share it across. That's kind of our philosophy. So thank you.
Back to the desk thing, and this is again more from Mrs. Howard. Mrs. Howard, is this a thing that... Is this something that... Mr. Harid, is this a thing that, is this something that we strictly look at as an option for, you know, all schools? Budget permitting, where we bring some of these standing desks in? Is this something that can be considered?
I do. I think this is a place, Harid. I was just kind of offlineing a comment with Mr. McAdams. I was talking to him, I toured the school back a month or so ago. It just so happened that the classroom I went in had one of the desks and there was a little bit of competition for it. So of course I got a whole introduction to its use then from the student. Yeah, it was kind of neat to see. Definitely.
Is it something that we could put out?
There's something to be said about it. Yeah, they're the ones that say that's a part of it. Yeah, it could be. Yeah, I mean, it's, it was interesting to see.
Yeah, for us, like I think who Mr. Macavo was talking about, too. It's hard to collect data on that because as soon as you put the desk there and then you ask the teachers, do the kids access it as they like it, it's, yes, right? So but there's no real measurable way to quantify it other than the kids' reports of how much they like it and it's always being accessed. I said, I just, I love seeing the self-accessibility, like, okay, I need a movement break. Like, I'm going to be standing.
That's what happened there. I was there, yeah.
I was going to say, sometimes it's more than about, well, gee, say, did a little bit better on this quiz or this report, this writing assignment. It's more about the student is more comfortable and able to better do the work in a better environment, right? And so, you know, obviously we can't afford to go by twenty-six hundred standing desks at this time. But it just seems like something, obviously there needs to be more study. It seems like something that we should look at for the future.
Definitely. The more you read about it, the deeper you get in that flexible seating and those other options, too. And it's very interesting.
And rather than by twenty-six hundred, it's by, put some of those out and then also some other options, right?
Yeah, like obviously the yoga ball, so they can have a little movement out. Or the chairs that are modified with, they put like a bicycle tube around them so they can just move their legs. This is just some interesting little things and that's why it's great to have like an occupational therapist each building because they share, you know, their expertise with the building. It's just great.
I just want to compliment Mr. Larson's students because I don't know if he instructed them, but I think those students spoke louder than any students we've had. They didn't have any microphone. We could hear every single one of them. Usually the kids are a little shy and those kids were great. They're all great, but those kids really projected. That's nice to see.
That's fun curriculum, too, that whole third grade Massachusetts social studies unit. So it's great to have those kids share that. And yes, they definitely work on that public speaking. That's what I was in there covering for a collaboration block later on the Friday afternoon. This is collaboration block and they were rehearsing some presentations they were doing. I monitored them as well. So yeah, there's definitely, you can see that he spends a lot of time on that kind of presentation and that standard.
I appreciate there's no quiz to make us feel dumb. That usually happens on these stuff.
Every once in a while, I throw in a random Massachusetts stat. So makes me feel good. I don't know. They know a lot more than me about it, so it's great to see. I liked how he took that, that classic like how to garner musical intelligence, right? There's those kids that will remember those facts forever, right? Somebody driving from the lemon store or wherever, they'll, the little jingle will come back and they'll remember that fact. That's pretty cool as well, so. Thank you all. I'm going to hang up, but I'm just going to go make sure all the kids got home safe.
You're lucky you have a short meeting.
I set up the conference room for you. So if you want to water, you can just let me know. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we're heading back to continued business. And I will hand it over to either Ms. Bautwell or Ms. McGowan.
So this is for the second reading, if I'm not mistaken. For the Code of Ethics. So this is labeled BH. Again, as we stated in the last meeting, the changes were specific to what was quoted in MASC Code of Ethics. So although we did agree that the grammar isn't ideal, we wanted to make sure that it was accurate and stated what they have stated within their code. Other than that, any questions?
We'll leave the grammar to future policy committee members.
You can't leave nothing for the committee.
Right.
Absolutely. All right, with that, I'll have a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll move to approve the second reading of Policy BH.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda would be the approval of the school committee minutes.
I'll move to approve the October twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen school committee open session minutes.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Conley, would you like to give a budget update?
I would. Thank you. What we packed this evening was the November budget report, which essentially is summarized the financial activity through the month of November. Again, it's broken up in two pages reflecting expenses and payroll activity. There's not really a lot of new information that was spoken of in the October budget report. We continue to monitor our expenses closely. As we talked about, the amount that would be exceeded on special education prepayment amount. It's looking like we will need to use those funds to change the two placements at the start of this one year. We've encumbered all utility expenses as we typically do and we just monitor that throughout the season to see how that goes throughout the winter months. I am pleased to report that the food service program closed out the month of October with a net profit. It was a profit that slightly exceeded the amount that we had forecasted in our budget. Mail counts across the district continue to show signs of improving each school as we did sell on average six percent more mails per day compared to last October. We'll continue to monitor the results of this program closely on a weekly basis. On the payroll side, there's a running up in certificate report. We continue to see payroll activity that's certainly relatively strictly tight, especially with the higher teacher attrition ratio and savings that we estimated during the FY nineteen budget process. But at this point in time, I think the most payroll lineups are certainly in budgeted ranges. And we'll certainly pay close attention to see how the winter months go as the winter season. That, instead of working out to few questions.
Couple of questions. For years to date, are we probably doing a food service out of a larger deficit incentive and a larger profit, so it'd be?
So we, I think we're in line with what we felt the September report was. As I spoke of last month, we may have lost a little bit more than we expected, but I wasn't too surprised by that. It's kind of been the trend and we look to make up, we look at those numbers. I think the important thing is that I think the mail counts and the average daily participation is still showing signs of trending upwards even despite several years now and several months where that's been the case. So in fact, that trend is still going in the right direction. October is pleased that we earned a little bit higher net profit than we thought. Typically, we look to have way good months in January and May. We're slightly behind our projected amount after the first two months of the year. It's plenty of time to make that up. So there's certainly no signs of concerns right now.
With the special education prepayment, is it only a portion of prepayments that they use or?
It's only a portion. There is some funds that are available. But I think the majority of the amount that we exceeded predated. We had encumbered based on the anticipated tuition costs, but there is some resource and everything like that.
And then, the only other thing, I don't know if a little subsidy like this, a lot of the rationalness. Are we doing a way to substitute or are we doing work for that?
The substitute budget right now, we look to be okay. We haven't had the need at this point in the year to expend or a projected need on long-term substitute budget. It would be over, but that could change quickly and we monitor that. The daily substitute, the short-term substitutes that we receive on a whole basis. We have been, like many districts across the state, struggling at certain days to fill some of the positions. But our fill rates have been between sixty and seventy percent. So we have been working at actively pursuing, increasing our substitute pool. But there has been days where it's been lower than we would have liked. And that's been a trend that's been pretty similar across the state right now, in most of the districts I've worked with. But I don't see any areas of concern in terms of us right now seeing a substitute budget as the report indicates.
Michael, when I'm looking at the district tuition, it shows all but ninety thousand five hundred and ten dollars to make. So I guess this is kind of following Scott's question. If we got another placement, do we have the funds to cover that?
So there are funds eliminated right now in the general fund to cover that. But we do have some funds available in the circuit breaker account. So where we do have a little bit of contingency and a little bit of unavailable balances in the special education reimbursement account. We did receive a little bit more funds based on some final adjustments in the account that happened at the state level where we forecasted about conservatives to be seventy percent. We gave it close to seventy-five, or maybe about seventy-four percent would certainly help. So we do have, you know, if something were to happen, we do have some funds available in that account to determine to. We're certainly hopeful or hoping that won't be the case. That would certainly help next year's budget and situation if we don't have to dip into that reserve right now in that account.
I don't know if I heard Rich mumble this, but did you ask about what we're paying substitutes? Because I was going to ask him, are we?
Well, I just was saying, it makes sense that we have trouble giving the job market.
Right, we did raise the amount, but are we having an issue because of what we're paying or is it?
We raised the amount. We dropped it from seventy dollars to eighty dollars. I would say we're right in the average with the area districts are paying. Some pay slightly more than that, but most districts are paying between seventy-five and eighty dollars. So I don't think that's the big issue. I think it's just the market right now and it's just a tough thing to fill. It's not an ordinary issue right now.
And I would just add that we've had some, a couple of short-term illnesses that obviously were not anticipated. Normally, if someone's going to be on leave, they send a leave notification. We've had a couple of short-term illnesses that have resulted in us using people that we had as a kind of count on daily sub to do an extended assignment. And so that has taken a couple of people off the books that we don't use for, you know, kind of, you know, might be like a three-week illness or one case was a family member of a teacher that was under home treatment for serious illness. So that person needs to be out. So those were a little bit unanticipated. I don't want to overstate it, but they were just things that cropped up unfortunately.
I think Richard's point is that teachers are either working full-time as teachers or they're working full-time somewhere else, so.
I think that is, that is true. It's good. I think, like as Michael said, I know we did go through that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we're taking a look at this process.
It made us a little bit more competitive. The online system that we use, that Michael took a lead on instituting, I think has been helpful in us being able to draw subs in. They can, like, they have their own account. The substitute teacher has their own account. They can select a job in whatever communities they want to work. That has helped us in some ways. But at the same time, if there's a community that they're also on the list to pay five dollars more a day, they may go there. And that does happen to us, but.
Yeah, I would say the system allows a lot of the jobs to get filled proactively, two or three days in advance for those planned absences. Right now, those last minute calls at five-thirty in the morning, that does take days. That's when we're having a little bit of a challenge to get those last minute fill rates to increase. But we have been pushing, you know, the postings and advertising. We actually reached out to the community not too long ago to see if there were any who are interested in something. And we got a pretty good response. We're starting to increase our pool. We had a lot of our go-to substitutes get full-time jobs. So the model is one that we relied on these last two years. You know, went on and got a full-time position or got a long-term position elsewhere in the district, even that district even. So we are working on filling out that pool that is, we're getting there.
This is a dumb question probably, but what are the requirements to be a sub? Do you have that a teaching degree?
College.
Like we did, again, I don't know if I was in college or in New York. I still don't have a, freshman in college, you're out of substance.
I did that, too, a little bit.
A daily sub, you can accept two years. And so in the next couple of weeks, we're going to probably have a few more. Something that goes with the students will be home on Saturday.
I think a day off. We got five tent to rate it?
There we go.
Well, I think a day off is a point.
But for longer terms, then we'd be looking for somebody that's licensed with a degree in sure.
And Mr. Conley, would you like to?
I would, yes. So the second part of the budget update, I wanted to break an update of the committee. This was something that we certainly talked about during the budget goals and we had talked about it being something that was going to be a topic this year of the budget and something we should look at. And you know, I did want to talk about the transportation contract and what our options are and some of the work and research that I have done to date, really over the last six months, and exploring what our options are and what the best avenue and what's the most advantageous decision for the district to undertake. So I did include about a two-page memo that summarized some of the steps and the options that we do have. I included some data that I've collected over the last six months and some of the results of some surveys and some of my meetings with surrounding communities that have taken place over the last several months. But we're getting to a point in December where we need to make the decision. Are we going to kind of test the market and go out to bid? Because in my opinion, transportation, you want to do that in a not-too-distant future. Or do we want to exercise our option to extend the current agreement with North Reading Transportation for a fourth and then potentially a fifth year? So just as a refresher, we currently had a three-year contract with NRT incorporation. That contract with NRT expires on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. So we have the option to extend for an additional two years. There are two one-year extensions to go up to as long as a fifth year. And as the memo discusses, after researching all of our options, I actually, this evening, I prepared one. And I do believe it is in our best interest right now to renew the existing agreement with NRT for a fourth and potentially a fifth year. Though we don't need to do that today. We can wait and see what the situation is next year. But in looking at the bus transportation market in Massachusetts right now and analyzing the results of those districts that have gone out to bid over the last eighteen months, that is a market that continues to experience the increase. And I think it's due to a variety of factors based on the conversations I have had with area business managers, with transportation coordinators, and even with local providers in this market. Certainly healthcare continues to be a driver. That's driving bus rates up right now in Massachusetts. The new Massachusetts sick time laws is certainly continuing to have an impact. And then right now, there really is just an overall shortage of qualified bus drivers. The registries have made some changes and there's just been, there are a lot of companies having difficulty getting qualified drivers pushed through the registration process and having a license to drive. And several of these factors are just continuing to result in an increase in the overall market. And that has been the case over the last eighteen months. Through the bids that I have reviewed, districts in the market is certainly trending much higher than our price that we're paying currently and the price that we would pay if we exercised in the fourth year of our contract. We went out to bid three years ago. We got five years of pricing. And that gave us the option to exercise that fourth or fifth year and to validate the market. And we're at that point where we need to, where we're doing that currently. And what's the status of the market? Is it, are we testing the market or was the price yielding such a lower price we could be here to go? And I think it's the latter of the two. You know, I really do believe it is in our best interest to exercise the renewal of the existing agreements. If you look at the data and the rates for districts that have gone out to bid for, what, nineteen is this current year as well as next year? I've called all those districts that have recently done that. And North Reading Agreement is about twenty-two. And North Reading agreements is about twenty-five dollars lower than in the average. We would be due to pay three hundred and fifty dollars per bus per day in fiscal year twenty, whereas the average of those districts that have gone out to bid over the last eighteen months has come to be at three-seventy-five. Many of those are districts that run three or four tear, you know, bussing systems like we do in North Reading. So, you know, I've spoken to a lot of business managers, I've spoken to transportation coordinators, I've spoken to area providers that would be potentially bidding on our bid. And they really feel we're looking at something in the three-seventy, three-seventy-five range or potentially higher right now. So the second part of the process that I did go through, we talked about this in August when we developed our fiscal two thousand and twenty budget goals, was what are our options with a regionalized bid option? And Mr. Webster had seen an article that had spoke of some retro west communities that have recently explored such an option and had attempted a regionalized bid about a year ago. It was dated December of two thousand and seventeen. So I reached out and spoken to those involved in these five weeks that listed in the memo that participated in such a venture a year ago. I also met with local business managers in the beginning of October, this past fall. Those included Reading, Winfield, Wellington, Stoneham, Woburn, Winchester, Wakefield. They were all attended that meeting and I talked about, and I shared the article. And I talked about such a possibility. I'd say there was moderate level of interest by some of those communities in exploring further. That led to me collecting a series of data and sharing out a survey in a Google document, which I collected from each of them. So if there was enough interest, I would have the data I would need to actually develop such a base expectation. And there were a few communities out of those six or seven that at that point said they would be interested. If it did go further, some had just gone out to bid and they were comfortable staying cool and didn't feel like the contracts lined up that made advantages for them. Some were just kind of comfortable kind of being, doing it kind of individually on their own. So it was kind of an interesting project, interesting data. My conversations with the five communities, you know, Oxford, Augman, Augrey, Webster, Dudley Charleston, were a few of them. They actually, it did not end up working out for them. The article kind of spoke positively about the project. They actually, only two of the communities, Lester and Oxford, actually sent a bid out. The other three ended up dropping out and staying on their own. And when they actually sent out the bid around this time a year ago, they only received one bid. As in, they wanted to, the whole idea is that it would increase competitiveness on a scale, they would receive a lot more bid. And that bid that they did receive actually was a thirty percent increase over their current pricing. So they rejected that bid and about a month later, they went back out and tried it again. And the result was pretty similar, it was a twenty-seven percent increase. And again, they only received one bid and it was not a bid from any current provider that they currently had. At this point, they decided to go their separate ways. And now it's March or April, it's late spring, it's getting late for them, they needed to close up the process. And when they went out to bid on their own, one of those communities knew was Lester received the same pricing and one of them received a two-and-a-half percent increase. So, you know, they felt, you know, they weren't sure. Some of the companies got together and kind of persuaded, you know, persuaded companies either not to bid or, you know, there's a lot of speculation there. But so I think, I think at this point in time, based on some of this research, I think it certainly is a project that has merit and should be continued to be explored. Just with everything going in the market right now, I don't think maybe this is the best time to do so. Especially we're getting to December. But I think, I'd like to kind of explore it down the road a year from now or two years from now. Have further, more detailed conversations with these communities in the area. See if we can make better aligned contracts at that point in time and try it again, I do think is merit and continuing to explore it. But I really don't believe that the market conditions are favorable for such a venture at this time. And I think it is in our best interest to exercise the optional here. That open up any questions?
I have a couple of thoughts or questions. I mean, it makes sense, it certainly makes sense from the provider's point of view to keep everybody on individual contracts because it allows them to renegotiate a lot of their business on a regular basis and take advantage of rates of, you know, the market going up. Did you end up speaking with any providers, just essentially milk the idea or?
I did, yeah, I did. So I did speak to two providers and, you know, some of them had mixed feelings on it. Some of them felt, you know, unless you're going to start eliminating bussing, eliminating the number of buses by figuring out a way to put students on the same bus from different communities and consolidating. They didn't think it would have any significant impact in pricing. And that wasn't, it's strategically very difficult to try to do that. So that wasn't the venture of the western communities that participated. It was just kind of under the same contract, under the same pricing, but they would all be kind of doing their same separate routes. So that was, that was one thought. You know, some felt if it required a smaller company to then have to make a significant capital investment in equipment to meet the demand, it could price them a little bit out of the market and then you're only going to get on top of these a much larger company and know that could impact service. Now you have a very large company and that could, you know, be one company that has the ability to meet such a requirement and a scale, a scope and size of that contract. So they, you know, they felt it might be a challenge there as well. So it was certainly interesting conversations.
And I would just, my only other comment is, I mean, I think it's worthwhile to sort of keep that figure in the wind to see, to see what's possible in the future. But also to keep it in mind as we go through the process of discussing, at the very beginning of the process, this is kind of school start time. Because obviously that's going to throw a bit of a monkey wrench into transportation anyway if we end up proceeding in that direction. So that might be a time in the future to revisit that.
Absolutely. Yeah, but I was, I mean, certainly the districts were, that I spoke, called and spoke to, were very helpful. They always, they were very excited, always calling back and having conversations about the experience.
Because everyone wants to see if they can floor their transportation cost in the bush. Do you have a sense, I'm sorry, one more question. Do you have a sense of the numbers on your spreadsheet here? How many of them were recently bid and how many of them were sort of legacy contracts?
Yeah, I would say about, I would say about half of these were recently bid within the last year. You know, it's a good, you know, some providers actually sent me bid results that they had over the last, you know, twelve months. And some responded to my survey. So a good amount of these would think were, right, that were recently bid. I can tell you, everyone that had bid over the last twelve months to eighteen months did experience a significant increase. Some of them from price ranges that we have now, three-forty, three-fifty, three-sixty, all four-hundred.
Michael, one, first, I think it makes the most sense to just take the fiscal year twenty rate from NRT. That seems like the best deal. Question I have is, an explanation for, like, you see a couple anomalies on here. Lexington, almost five hundred dollars a bus. And the new report is just going to be a little bit three-hundred. Is that, do those districts, because you don't have a provider, are they doing their own bussing or?
No, I mean, I know Lexington has, I believe they actually have A and A in transportation. And, yeah, I was a little surprised at some of these numbers and why they were so high. I thought it was just, you know, with geography, we had it located.
Maybe it's longer, so they have to buss longer.
Yeah, geography has, it must have a lot to do with it.
It does, in this market, it's huge, that's huge.
Sometimes they'd be less willing to, you know, be the most efficient.
Yeah, yes.
Right.
And the other thing is, there are so few companies. Even if, there aren't that many companies operating these services.
Michael Conley.
I don't say. Michael, how, because how many are you making on that deal?
It is a different spelling.
I saw that and I was like, wow.
I wanted to question.
Yeah.
Oh, did I tell you?
Yeah.
On the side. So.
Good research.
Yeah, I thought it was through, through this information and research. And we started, we started, certainly started the conversation with many of these area communities. So I think it'd be interesting picking it up again in the future.
My only concern is, of course, the longer we delay, the more it's going to be. I don't, I don't know if we can cap on another couple of years when it's, I'm just worried that if it gets remembered and less expensive, I'll never be back here in a year and a half and say, oh, well, actually the rates are coming down for bussing.
Yeah, I mean, the market, the market can change. You know, I've, I've been sending out transportation bids for quite some time and I, you know, I've seen it, I've seen it change. And I've seen, you know, going out to bid at the right time and it does yield the savings. I think, you know, once, potentially in the future, these providers get kind of over the hump of dealing with the health insurance market and the ACA and rail wage challenges and migrating and changing the safety law act. There's just a significant critical shortage of drivers right now. And I think that can change too. So I think it's, you know, it could, it's potential to go down. But certainly right now, I think it's most likely that it will go up.
The other thing to think about is, I have no idea how this would affect pricing, but if bus companies become less dependent on gasoline-driven vehicles and move to electric, at some point, those could become less expensive to operate. Now, there's going to be a cost to obviously invest in those electric vehicles, but, and that's probably five, eight years down the road. I just think getting a price of three-fifty, that's the rate we're looking at, right?
Correct, yeah.
I think if you look at the rest of the rates, if we go out to bid, we're not going to get as close to three-fifty.
That's correct.
So.
I think there's no question that I'd take the rate.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering about, and, yeah.
I mean, and if you do it one year at a time, so.
Well, I guess, I think what Mr. Buckley is suggesting, correct me if I'm wrong, take the rates and also negotiate the next two years now.
Yeah, well, the issue with that is, we have to go out to bid. So right now, we have the option to go as long as five years with transportation. So, you know, it has to be a sealed bid process and you can't, and they can't.
For years.
Correct, right. Yeah. There was a motion, motion talks about the fourth and fifth year, but I think it's fine if we meant that and just say the option for four years.
We have to adjust the motion.
Yes.
I will make a motion that school committee move to exercise the option of fourth year of the regular school bus transportation contract to NRT in July first, two thousand and nineteen to June thirty, two thousand and twenty, as recommended by the administration.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Bernard, do we have any staffing updates?
I'm cheering with you. Just a couple of updates for you. Some additional new staff that have been hired. And maybe that wasn't the right way to phrase that, because these are, these are new staff that have been hired, but only one is an additional position. And I think you know about that from the recent project update when we talked about the higher additional power professional, which probably others are replacing existing staff. So I'd like to welcome Mary Smolak as a special education teacher literacy specialist here at the school. Jane Donovan, who is a point four F D E, full-time applicant, power professional, Jane Donovan. Ashley Zinchak, a special education power professional, I'm sorry, both of those are at the little school. As is Colleen Hegarty, a special education power also in the pre-K program. She is a point five position and she will be standing with us two minutes from today.
Bits and donations?
Looks like we have two. I move that the school committee vote to accept a gratitude donation of two thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the North Reading Middle School Parents Association to fund the purchase of Wachusett T-shirts for the eighth grade students. This donation will also pay for the eighth grade field trip to the Huntington Theater for a performance of Edgar Allan Poe's story.
Second. All in favor?
Hi. And I move that the school committee vote to accept the gratitude donation of ten resource videos valued at nine hundred dollars to be used by health educators and students at the middle and high schools.
All in favor, or do I have a second?
Second.
May I also mention that if that's from the North Reading Community Impact, the drug-free, the drug-free community, it's free.
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Conley, I skipped over the food services.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I can reference that as well. So we are also, this evening, wanted to hopefully, you know, discuss this evening, the school committee representative for collective bargaining with food services contract. That contract is a long contract this year, but it does expire at the end of square, two-thirty. It most likely will be starting this process kind of after the holiday season. Remember, the concerts, Broadway and Union, so. At the point, I was trying to entertain and do volunteer participation in this process. Right now, the process is kind of all through some data, connecting a couple of districts, grades, contracts. Yeah, I know, I know, we've got a lot of assignments in the past. So, you know, generally, we've had kind of a good relationship, it's been a good process. We've been able to kind of get things done in the middle of the week.
Typically afternoon, noon, something?
Yeah, generally after their, their work day, you know, two-thirty, three o'clock, three o'clock day. So, is generally what we've done in the past.
I have some interest, because you've done it before and you know that.
I mean, are you interested at all? Do you have the time?
I don't, I'm a little full on happening meetings, so I think I'd rather skip this one out of the class.
I'm more than happy to set up, just like, do it again if you want it, if you can make it go.
I don't know.
Are you going to be able to make the meeting?
I don't know if there's not that many of them.
It hasn't been passed, I mean, ever.
Three days, so like three months maybe?
Oh, yeah, for three or four months, it might be maybe half a dozen times.
I could probably do that if, one.
It's entirely up to you. Like I said, if you can't, then I can.
I mean, I think last year we were talking about it, it seems like this is a good one to kind of learn the process. And since we have a lot of new people here, then I would find, try them in the process.
Did you have a new rep? I know that he came in recently, introduced himself to me. So, yeah, we're the same, they're the same video representatives for the last number of years, so it would be someone new.
Refresh my memory. If Mr. Buckley takes the opportunity to do the contract, if he can't make it, could I step in?
Yes, yeah, I can step in.
Then you would like to do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Subcommittee updates. For the athletic subcommittee.
Diane has heard a few of the questions, not Mr. Bernard.
I can, I can help.
We talked about, oh, I know one thing, we had the music boosters in.
The music boosters in.
And this is the one I remember, the Diane, you can take, the music boosters for years, if students who participate in the music program have come to the high school after football games to clean the grandstands. It's like some sort of agreement, if you're going to sell food, then the music booster students are going to clean the stands after the games. And this year, the heads of music boosters said, why are you doing this? And they approached, I think they approached me to mull in. They, and one of them approached me and they came to our meeting and made a good presentation for it not making any sense. Why do the students have to come to the high school at nine-thirty on a Friday night to clean the grandstands? So we agreed as a committee and administration that the students will no longer clean the grandstands. However, we also said that we're going to monitor for costs. If the, if the Saudis do it, what's the additional cost going to be? And we did. And we did mention the possibility of seeking some minor funding from music boosters possibly in the future, but we said we have a long time to, to think about this. Is that pretty much?
I don't think they were too receptive.
No, I don't think they were too receptive.
So I think we were going to, we'll incur the expense, the district will, but we'll monitor, are they selling things that maybe are contributing to that expense?
Right, that's what I think you talked about, what products that they're selling.
Right.
And maybe if they don't sell, so for example, punk corn, which seems to be, it makes the biggest mess of the field and takes the longest time to clean up.
Although if it's our people cleaning and they have the access to using leaf ball, it might make it easier, so it could, it could work. And certainly we're moving the idea that we can, we can make it worse.
But I said, they left, they left happy that their students won't have to be cleaning the stands.
Also.
And then the rest of it is all the board committee, Diane, so.
So after that, we talked about the winter sports team registrations, so some numbers for you all. Let's see, so this year it's three hundred and two registrations, before cuts, I should say. It includes the co-op gymnastics, which is about, girls hockey, which is co-op, which is about eleven, and the other co-op swimming wrestling. Last year, we were at two ninety-nine, so roughly around the same. We'll probably end up around two ninety-eight.
That's an increase for the smaller, smaller class.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
We're actually, we're actually holding our own, Mr. Johnson told me today, as a matter of fact, junior students came across winter track. So, yeah, I think we're holding a pretty good number, where our population is down about fifty-five students overall at the school, so it's good to be kind of even the same number.
And Mr. Johnson also mentioned, I think, nine women can students had signed up for the, the new co-op sort of thing, right?
We also, the, the budget, the athletic budget there goes pretty straightforward, there was no real surprises there, correct me if I'm wrong. They also, we also talked about the softball field complex, the dugouts and the scoreboard, which I think you're all aware of, that was put in that group this week, last meeting. So we just updated the committee that were putting that group in the capital request. And talked about another option that I think we figured out by kind of fail, which was some, some dollars that were allocated elsewhere. In terms of the fields and facilities, we talked about the, there was an issue with, there was some saw that the diamond club was providing for the baseball field group. And I'm no expert in landscape, but they cut the saw.
I think John, you have an update next, don't you?
No, I'm happy to, I'm just, I'm laughing because I might really be having an extra.
The old saw?
So I think, and I think I sent an update out Friday, maybe Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday, I forget, I had to show the after the meeting, do you mind?
No.
What happened was, you know, I left that meeting, I think we were all of the opinion that it was kind of, it looked like it was over for this season, we didn't think we were wanting to, you know, be able to get slide in there because of weather or anticipated weather. So ultimately what happened was, when I learned that the existing saw had been cut, which led, I think, a reasonable person to conclude, who know that that's not going to be good for the script. We know that's going to, that's not going to be, so. Kind of took the bull by the horns a little bit and got on the phone with the gentleman that is doing the project, and again, we're a little bit at university because they are doing it for very reduced cost and it's a nice gesture that they're doing, you know, kind of this very community service. And to their credit, they were there the next day and the saw was laid on Saturday, actually, I don't know if you can buy, but they worked pretty diligently on, so I think we met on Tuesday, I called on Wednesday, we had Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You know, we kind of looked at what the weather was going to be like for a period of time. Now, it may or may not work, and if it doesn't work, then we're no worse off than we were, we have a saw to be cut. So I felt like it was worth, at least trying this, and they're committed to, if it's not, you know, we'll deal with it in this spring at the end, we have options. We do have kind of, in a good way, a bit of a funky schedule for baseball and early part of the season, we're moving games off-site, that our, our schedule to be home games is not all that problematic. If we have to flip a couple of games, we've got to do like this before for other projects we've undertaken. So I think I saw that there was more positives to working with the, with the, with the contract and you get them and you try to do it in the name, it's a semester. So I'm hoping for, you know, a mild week or two here, which you get some right now, it is. And hopefully, we'll link to that, that saw will take root and, you know, we'll be okay in the spring. It's, it's a little bit risky, but what we had was not going to work, we knew that, so.
We still have to always put the saw down at the end of the Friday.
And, you know, I've been told by many, many saw experts, that they can put it down in worthy cold temperatures.
The gentleman doing the work is, I don't think he would have done it.
Yeah, exactly.
It's on his side, he's going to have to go back and do it again, so. When we did the, when we did the multipurpose thing, the softball, that was first week of November. We went back and looked, it was early November, now this is, you know, four weeks later, but, you know, it's been mild, it's been wet, you know, I think all those things give him positives, so we'll see. Very good. He was very good. Now, he understood, I think, the pressures and, you know, he's trying to balance his job with jobs that are paying him a lot more, you know, money. I respect that, I get it, you know, so he had the table he should get, he's a very good guy and does his work, so.
Can I ask about, about the concession stand, one more thing? No, you might know this, but if the music boosters are the ones that run all the games to get the money, if they don't have to do the work afterwards, there are any thoughts that other groups are going to want to now do that as well?
Other groups don't have to, like, we don't have to.
Because they'll be out of the right.
The basketball boosters have a, have a concession stand and it's not supposed to be cool in the gym, but believe me, I've been to the games, it's kind of cool in the gym. They don't have to clean the grandstands, the Sodians, they're the only group.
I just didn't know if there's any, if there's going to be other groups that are now interested in selling things and making the money from the concessions instead of.
I don't think.
Probably not, it's a pretty good reason.
Mr. McCann.
No one knows why it ever, it ever stopped.
It's been done before John came.
I think it's sixteen years, it's been that way, I don't know, I don't like it either, they all, it kind of seemed okay, they were giving it then, their program was benefiting from it, I think, I think we can do better.
Yeah.
And I would imagine that was just the tennis courts.
Oh, yeah, we did talk, that's right. That was the issue, no, that was the issue brought up by Rita, which I had on my list too, was to put some sort of, maybe small grandstands at the tennis court. And Mr. Bernard had already been looking at possibly putting some concrete pads in and benches, possibly something.
I had an update on that, I did meet with a gentleman last Thursday morning, Mr. Palazzola, who's a North Reading guy, who's done some work with us in the past, very good guy. He met with me Thursday morning, he sent me the quote today for two twelve-foot by thirty-foot concrete pads, basically centered on, if you can picture the tennis courts, if you're in the parking lot side, these would be splitting the net.
So on each side of the, right.
Right, so if you're watching the two court, you can see the three courts and it would be centered on the net line. And he sent me the quote, and it was a pretty involved job, I mean, he's doing it, you know, digging down twelve inches, putting eight inches of crustone, four inches of concrete, all mesh, wire mesh. It was ninety-six hundred dollars for the two pads, twelve feet by thirty feet long, and they could be used, you know, what we do, that we talked about, kind of a memorial bench, or a small set of aluminum bleachers, much like we did with the saw, and that kind of thing. So the, the Hall of Fame, Chuck Aluncia, the meeting had said, you know, if you want to get the quote, I sent it to him today, I haven't heard from him, so.
Yeah, that's right.
He's texting me about, texting me other things.
Send the quote and we'll see what we can do.
So I did, I did share that with him, and so that, you know, it seemed reasonable for him, I mean, he's going to bring in a heavy equipment to dig down, you know, so we'll see. But I think, I think it would be a nice finished product.
I think it's a legitimate request, I've been approached by a couple of parents to have a couple, at least one small set of, not two, of grandstands.
Oh, I think it was very reasonable, yeah.
And also, Marty Chilton from Parks and Parks said he was going to get some quotes on some small grandstands.
I was going to add one other thing, you know, I think, I think this is good for kind of the public in the western of the community, number two, is that there's talk of putting some electronic heating systems.
Oh, that's right.
A concession stand in the latte rooms, you know, kind of the November, you know, use, so it looked like that was going to be a town project. And I have those corner electric type heater blowers.
Our New England ancestors are rolling into this. But it has been typically cold the last few.
Yes. Well, this past activity they gave, we were in a trailer.
And while they had, I mean, Linto, they ride in quarter meters, right?
For the field, all for the bathrooms, they did, yeah, they did have electric heaters in there. On that, I think that's what my initial was.
There was no other subcommittee meetings, so the upcoming schedule, the policy subcommittee will meet December sixth at three thirty in the superintendent's room. The finance planning team meets December thirteenth at eight fifteen AM in the superintendent's conference room.
It's going to be before that?
Yeah, or I believe we're coming in at seven forty-five, right? Um, the CIPC will meet December thirteenth at four PM at Town Hall in room five. The Substance Abuse Coalition meets December eighteenth at ten AM in the North Reading Police Station. North Cam Board of Directors meets December twenty-seventh at seven PM in the North Reading office. And the athletic subcommittee meets again on January eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at twelve thirty PM in the superintendent's room. Mr. Bernard, do you have an administrative report?
I do, I think you all have a copy, I, I have a few things to share with you tonight. One is just for your information, I printed a copy of my fall news, I have it out of town just before Thanksgiving. So just a copy for yours, for your information.
You don't have to read it for us?
I'm sorry?
You don't have to read it for us, it's romantic reading.
I'd be happy to. I included for you kind of my traditional presentation, this is the information, data on the most recent SAT score report. I gave this to you in a little bit different format this year, because this is the first year, this is kind of baseline data for us now for the first full year of the new exam. Whereas in the past, there'd been one, one session of the old exam and one session of the new. And these scores, you should know too, they represent the student's latest score only, they do not represent their best score, which is a little bit of interesting statistic, it's their latest score. So the student took a, a fall SAT and a spring SAT again, but they did a spring SAT only, they got a.
So, and there's no comparison to last year?
Not the apples to apples, no, no. So I think, you know, very pretty well, this, we, I also call your attention to a number of test takers who's very high. Some of you will remember that last year, senior class was only pulled five just to come through, probably that long, twenty years.
What do colleges look at, does it depend on the hours, do they look at labs?
It does, it does. More and more schools are finding two of these in the ACT.
Yeah.
The ACT two subject tests are becoming more and more popular.
And more and more schools are making SATs and ACTs lower down the list of priorities in terms of when you apply, like, I mean, they might be, whereas they might be one or two before now, they're like three or four. They're looking at, they are really looking at well-rounded students, you know, grades obviously, but, you know, what do they participate in, et cetera, et cetera.
Are you going to comment on the fact that we again?
I really do like the fact that we get.
I was howling at you, raised that.
And I'm hoping the Lynn Fields who pretend in college again to wonder how do you keep.
You remembered that?
Who said you remembered that?
Thank you.
How am I going to forget that?
We'll talk about it over the dinner she has to buy me for winning the football game, but for North Reading, winning the.
I bet I'm not playing, I bet I'm not applying to that.
Three years in a row, North Reading is.
Good thing it's not a multiplier.
I shared, I, I updated you before on the work of the social emotional learning retreat. The work of the, of the twenty-nine people that participated in this year's retreat came to a close in November, and so I just, I shared a kind of, not a closing letter, but an update, I think, if you will, of the work as it came to a close to the three formal sessions, and I just, I thought it would be, where the, where the SEL work is one of my goals in my educator plan, I want to kind of try to keep you informed of what's going on in relation to work across the district with, with relation to SEL. I have attached for you tomorrow night, there is a, what I think is going to be a very interesting presentation. If you don't, if you don't know Meredith Casey, she's one of our students at the middle school, she started the Mighty Meredith Project, and she is a terrific young lady who is doing some really wonderful work around raising awareness around head injuries and, and the impact of concussions. And she, her foundation, she's at a pretty, pretty sizable nonprofit going, the Mighty Earth Project. Her foundation is bringing a gentleman in tomorrow night at the performing outside of the middle high school. This Dr. Christopher Lewinsky will give you a copy of the flyer, but my last conversation with Meredith's mother last week was that there were about a hundred and sixty-five or so people registered to attend tomorrow. And I would respect, I think I did another all-call email on Friday, there was an article in the transcript on Thursday, and it was actually a piece I saw on the Globe yesterday, the Sunday Globe, kind of, it's not called the Globe Morning, it's like Globe Vocal or something, yeah. It was a little, whatever, near that, I saw it as well, so she sent it. About this, about this program.
This is, this is the one that the co-founder of the BUCT Center, that's the.
Correct.
That's the big one that everyone talked about.
The former, former high school, he's like a, he's a big, he's a big year.
He's a wrestler, he played football.
Where all the NFL players go, they're great.
This guy is probably the smartest guy on the.
This is the real deal, and this is going to be a pretty significant presentation, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if he can make it, you know, and plus, I'm not sure, will he be live tonight, Jason?
Uh-huh.
No, okay. So, that's, I think it's interesting tomorrow night. And then lastly, some of you have said it already, but I just wanted to give a shout out to the cast and crew, and to, to Allison Kane and her, her faculty staff for this past weekend's performance of Shrek, the musical, it was fantastic, cello crowds, it sold out again for, for this coming Friday and Saturday. Just once again, I think the expectations of ACN, ours went down for our performing, that's what it was, pretty low. And in the good news department, we have two of our students, some of you, I think all of you know Michael Tyrell, because he's one of our students of the school committee, but also Samantha Markel, had been named documented students in this year's PSAT, NMSQ, National Association of Speciality Qualifying Test, which is, represents about thirty-four thousand students across the country that get recognized for their outstanding performance on the PSAT. So traditionally have students recognized, on occasion, I have a student named as a semifinalist, but it's just, you know, two very, very bright students that are, that are doing really well, and I think such to acknowledge them publicly, you know.
One thing I wanted to add about the performance that I went Friday night, there was a large number of students there, which I really like to see students supporting their fellow students, and there was a big number. I saw Michael Tyrell, he was sitting very kind, but there was a large number of students and that's always a good thing. And you think about it, they sold, it's over twenty-six hundred tickets, because the auditorium holds about six, 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 four. Not that I would know that now. Jerry Solis, Jerry Solis leaves his entire seats in there, but that's, that's pretty impressive.
I thought, I mean, I, I also love that, like, when I went on Saturday to the matinee, there were a ton of little kids there.
Yeah.
And what, but what was great was just like the little kids seeing the high school and you heard a lot of the parents saying, oh, the middle school's attached to this, and just seeing it, and, you know, and like, and I also liked that there were younger kids, students in the performance as well, which is great, I mean, Julie Goffey's daughter was at, you know, was a fourth grader, and so I just think it's great that, you know, the kids have the introduction to it, and we even went to the Shrek, a Shrekkfest the next day.
Oh, you went to the Shrekkfest Sunday?
We did that the next day, which was great, and the students brought them around and it was good, it's a good performance, it gets a, I think, especially for my son who's in the fourth grade, I think it's great for him to get comfortable in the school and just gives an opportunity to feel more comfortable there, so.
Such a, kind of a really great choice of, of show, of community.
For future business, excuse me, we have a meeting on December seventeenth. The superintendent's office room will have an executive meeting starting at six, and then the open sess, open meeting starting at six thirty. And then January seventh, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty, it will be at the distance, long distance, or, learning map, we always say long distance, it's just a distance.
Jerry, Jerry was a long distance guy.
He's still a long distance.
From the long distance.
Yeah, exactly.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to.
One thing, just to remind the committee, after next meeting, we'll have our Christmas festivities.
On the seventeen.
Great, we walk for a few.
Appetizers.
Appetizers.
A few adult appetizers, thanks.
Is that official business, should that be part of the official?
Yes, that should be, it used to be, sometimes I'd invite.
Wear this sweater, anyone can help me with one.
That's, that's his subtle way of saying, John, keep the agenda short.
That's exactly, I was just, so Mr. John, keep the agenda short for next week.
See, you do say that a lot lately.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.